This conference will now be recorded.
We do have an introduction of one board, new board member. And so Ray, would you like to go ahead and introduce him?
Sure. The county board appointed our new member, Ms. Anne Barrow. And, yeah, so actually, we provide orientation with her. And while we did not have a meeting in July, but I think she's well worth of what's going on and all the agenda materials and everything. So we probably have the commissions welcome you and really looking forward to working with you.
Do we want to go around the table just to introduce ourselves real quick? Katie?
Yeah, and I'm Katie Ritter. I've been a commissioner since August of 2023.
Jim Fruman, been a commissioner for maybe three years, give or take.
I'm Nora Harrison, who is a member of the council. I don't know.
Frederick, you're at just.
Bart, why did I have back on several years ago? Just got come back on, I think in January.
Bart, I had four, four, five years, something like that.
I've gone parole, I think I've been on for about eight years now.
That's true. And Amy, we're introducing ourselves to Anne, who's our new commissioner.
Hi, nice to meet you, Anne. I'm Amy Roder, and I'm the unit five representative. And I think this is going on my second year now. It's so pretty.
I don't know, Anne, you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to. My name is Anne Barrow. I work at Illinois State University in the Department of Agriculture, teaching landscape architecture, design, and horticulture. My background is in green infrastructure, sustainability, soil water management. I have a keen interest in all of those things. And I'm really happy to join the board. And I hope I can contribute positively to what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Next on our agenda is public comment. And we do have some individuals who'd like to make comments to the commission before we begin our business. I'd like to remind the commissioners the policy that we have established that is in concert with the county's policy on public comment. And just to refresh your memories, that a public comment period not to exceed 15 minutes will be held at the beginning of each regularly scheduled meeting of the McLean County Regional Planning Commission and individual committees of the commission. Anyone desiring to address the commission must complete and submit a public comment card available at the commission's website or at the offices of the commission located at 115 East Washington Streets, 3M 103, Bloomington, up to 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. The person shall include his or her name, contact information, and comment subject matter. There should be a maximum of five speakers in any public comment period. In the event more than five public comment cards are submitted, the chair shall randomly select the five speakers. Comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker. A speaker cannot give his or her allocated time to another speaker to increase that person's allocated time. Speaker will be acknowledged, the speakers will be acknowledged by the chair and shall address the commission members. Speakers will begin their statements by first stating their name and address for the record. Statements must be related to the commission business or that of individual committees being addressed. Statements are to be directed to the commission and not individual members. Public comment is not intended to require a commission to provide any response to the comments. And discussion between the speaker and the members of the audience will be not allowed. All speakers are required to speak in a civil tone and refrain from using vulgar, obscene, or otherwise inappropriate language when addressing the commission. Failure to do so may result in disqualification from addressing the commission and expulsion of the speaker from the meeting. After the speaker has made their comments, they shall be seated with no further debate, dialogue, or comment from the commission. Any questions before we move on? All right. Our first speaker that we have. And also, real quickly, Jen is going to be our official timekeeper for three minutes, for the three minutes. And also for the speakers, Jen will also let you know when you have 30 seconds left in your three-minute time frame. So first on the agenda is Annette Noid.
It's Nauden, I guess she hasn't made it yet, so we'll have to skip Annette.
Pardon?
She doesn't look like she's made it yet.
Okay. Then the next one is Ruth Burke. Okay, Ruth. If you could state your name and your address, and then Jen will start the clock.
My name is Ruth Burke. I live on Chaney's Grove Road in Old Town Township. I'm a professor at ISU, and I just do as a system of instruction. I'm deeply troubled not only by what's in the strategic land use plan, but also by how it's developed. I've shared the plan with my neighbors and their just as concerned as I am, both about its impact on rural areas and the lack of transparency in the process. The maps and the language in this draft raise serious questions about how farmland will be protected and whether the rural character of our county will be preserved. None of these questions can be answered when rural communities constituents haven't been part of the discussion from the start. From day one, this process has been top-down. We were invited to help shape the plan. We were handed the draft already near complete and told to comment after the fact. That's not transparency, and it's not meaningful engagement. I'm also concerned about the influence either overt or covert of the Economic Development Council on these plans. When the chair of this commission is employed by that organization, it raises questions about whether economic development priorities often align to urban interests or outweighing needs and perspectives of rural communities. At this point, since the commission staff are already on the record stating they targeted July 2026 for the completion of the comprehensive plan for the county, there must be a purposeful effort to build a larger group of people to shape that plan. The plan in 2009 was very thoughtful, worked through the entire thing and engaged many people. Where's the current effort to build on that? Or, as we keep hearing, is all of this only in response to the development pressures on the city and town, the basement? If that's the case, leave the rest of us out of it and call it what it is, a plan for Bloomington Normal, where it's certainly not a plan in the county.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Trisha Beer. Trisha? Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Trisha Brady, and I'm with the neighbors.
Sorry.
That's good.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about representation for the entire county, not just its urban centers, and about the need for honesty, transparency, and adherence to the commission's own bylaws. Article two, section two of this commission's bylaws states that the commission will, quote, "consult with all jurisdictions in McLean County in the course of preparing plans and programs," end quote. That has not happened. Repeatedly, staff have stated that they are engaging with county, town of Normal, and city of Bloomington staff, but no other jurisdictions have been meaningfully solicited for their involvement in the strategic land use plan. This is a direct failure to follow your own rules. The commission's own June press release and the report presented at the June board meeting both said the plan was to be completed in July. Neither mentioned outreach to other jurisdictions. Yet now, in a July 16, 2025 email from the commission chair, sent after public objections from rural communities had already been raised, the plan is described as, quote, "meant to be a starting point for discussions around the county," end quote, with the insurance that, quote, "feedback is being sought from all municipalities in the county and at all levels. As the planning process proceeds, more input will be sought," end quote. This is a reactive shift in narrative from what was publicly stated in June, and it undermines trust in the process. The draft Strategic Land Use Plan is not the only major planning document in play. The comprehensive plan, as discussed at this body's June meeting, is scheduled for completion in July 2026, a process that should require broad early engagement with every jurisdiction in McLean County. Yet at last week's meeting of the McLean County Mayor's Association, attended by staff from this commission, the county, the city, and the town, not one word was mentioned about the timeline for the comprehensive plan. That was a perfect opportunity to start the conversation with local officials, and it was simply ignored. I'm also concerned about the composition of the board of commissioners itself. The chair is employed by the Economic Development Council, an organization whose interests and priorities may not always align with balanced county-wide planning. This dual role presents at least the appearance of a conflict of interest, and it raises legitimate concerns about whether the commission's decisions are being made in the best interest of all McLean County residents. If the commission is serious about representing all of McLean County, then it must, one, publicly acknowledge the discrepancy between the June record and the current narrative; two, comply fully with Article two, section two, by engaging every jurisdiction in the county; three, begin immediate transparent outreach on both the Strategic Land Use Plan and the Comprehensive Plan, including rural communities; four, address potential conflicts of interest and leadership and diversify the composition of commissioners to better reflect the county's full range of communities and perspectives. I get to discover to whom this commission is responsible. However, it is easy to see whom this commission is responsive to. It's responsive to the city, the town, and developers, and that is simply unacceptable.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. And there are three items, minutes of the June fourth meeting, the financial reports, and the staff reports. Are there any questions or items that any of the commissioners would like to see removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Thank you, Bart. Second?
Second.
Second, Joe. All those who favor signify by a standing aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay. Now onto our regular agenda. And actually, our items for information or discussion, starting with the item A, which is a presentation by Nora Harrison, who is the Senior Community Development Manager for the EDC. Nora?
So I'm going to start just by connecting that as to why the EDC is working on childcare. For a lot of people, that's not a natural connection, so I was going to say. One of the things that the Economic Development Council looks at is community development, and under community development, it's workforce development. We look at workforce development from a different lens than other people do. In the workforce development ecosystem, there are players who contribute to the talent pipeline by education and skills. We look at what that talent pipeline needs to get to work on a daily basis to meet those important needs. So the infrastructure for that talent pipeline is where the EDC comes in. We look at things like housing, transportation, broadband, rural communities, and childcare even as infrastructure to support workforce development. While we're working on attracting businesses, those businesses let us know that, hey, if you don't have housing for new employees, and if you don't have childcare for new employees, we're not going to be able to locate in your area. And so as we go out to conferences and talk to site collectors, we hear things that are important to them. We've also had different businesses in the community share with us that they are having challenges either as a provider of childcare, they're having challenges, or they're having challenges because their employees are needing to stay home or modify their schedules, or they want to work from home because of childcare. And so that's how this came to me, and why we started working on this issue. So we have three surveys that we are sharing with the community right now. They have three different purposes. One of them is for childcare providers, and it is to assess what struggles they are having. And we started this process back in April. And at our Workforce Development Summit, we presented the results of that survey. It is still open, it is still ongoing. So at this point, additional childcare providers can still contribute to this survey and share their challenges. We're going to wrap up all three surveys September 30. We also have the community needs survey, which is for members of the community who are parents, guardians of children. It is actually birth to age 12, and it's anyone who is a parent currently or planning to become a parent in the next three or five years, so that we can figure out what the childcare demand is going to be, what it currently is, and what it's going to be as we're making plans. And then the last one is the business impact survey. So we want business owners to share with us the challenges that they are having in connection to childcare, if it was staffing, if it's operational, even if it's something as small as, you know, one person is staying home, one person didn't return to work after maternity leave because the cost of childcare is greater than the reward for it. So far, we've had 18 providers, five businesses, and 141 community members. We do anticipate having a larger response time when people return to school, return to work. That's typically a time of year where people are more actively looking for childcare, which is also what we're keeping open until September 30. So once we go through the surveys, we also plan to pair that with what options other communities are exploring and how they're addressing those problems, because childcare is an issue across the country, it's not just locally. And so these are just a few examples of incentives that we've found and things that we're considering. It's not, these are decisions that we're making. This is just information that we're presenting as we communicate with our state and local municipalities on options that are available. In New Mexico, using revenue from oil and gas, they also built a New Mexico Early Child Education Care Fund. And so using revenue from those two programs, they were able to make childcare free for families earning up to 400% of the federal poverty line. Michigan has a tri-share model, and they are able to split the cost of childcare between the employee, the employer, and the state. Florida, Alabama, and Illinois all have tax credit programs, but they work a little differently. Illinois does have an option, but from my understanding, it's not used frequently. Most of these are to incentivize this creation of a childcare program. So if a business started a childcare program for their employees, their tax credits may be able to take advantage of. In Alabama, their program, they could take advantage of the tax credits just for paying for the childcare costs. They didn't have to start their own program. Alabama also has the nonprofit option, so that if the business was a nonprofit business and they didn't have to worry about taxes, they could apply for a grant to receive benefits in that way. Florida also has a nonprofit that pays out $5,000 stipends to educators for higher education achievements, and that's part of encouraging continued education and improving quality of care over time. And then there's a couple of county-level incentives in Sonoma County, California, and Travis County, Texas, where they've assigned a portion of tax revenue to go directly to childcare funding. So those are just a few options that we've looked at and looking at how they work, where the funds are coming from, and what it's adding to childcare and stuff like that. So as we pair the results of the survey, we can pair it with suggestions, and then hopefully have outcomes. The end goal, of course, is to have enough answers to fund a substantial study. So not just a local community survey, but we wanted to do an actual study. But before we do an actual study, we need to show that there's a need. And so this, our surveys are to identify the need and then change starts with the legitimate study from a third-party external person, so that there's no perception of influence. And then we would take that and pair it with incentives that we want to hopefully decision-makers and people who can then make change. So how you can help as businesses, you can take the business impact survey. You can definitely take the community survey. You can share that community survey. And you can always support the childcare providers, or basically the childcare providers that you know. And then if there's any questions, I will.
Questions for Nora?
All right, we track where the responses come from. Do they come from those locations or anything?
Intentionally, no. We wanted to be anonymous, and the people felt free to share what they want to share. So when it came to the providers, we know that we have for-profit, nonprofit. We know we have centers as well as home makes represented. Outside of that, we did comics and an ending so that people can speak freely.
Any other questions for Nora? Thank you so much, Nora, I appreciate it. We're now on to item B, which is the housing coordinator position update from the RISE grant. Ray?
Sure, yeah, thank you. We've been, in some communications with DCEO, the state's agency, Department of Commerce Economic Opportunity, regarding the grants and in terms of the budget allocation, there's some questions. We try to reinforce some answers from them, or some kind of decisions. And it seems we gave an update here to the commission. Talking with the county admin and HR, we've all decided the best approach to solicit this housing coordinator is through an RFP process, as opposed to the regular hiring of a full-time employee. While this position is like a two-year position, or as a temporary employee or term employee. And so we are working on the RFP, so we're hoping to get that issue soon and then just come, will be like a kind of vendor type. You all know RFP, we have done it in the past for different reasons. And so I can't look at from a vendor consultant, quote-unquote, perspective. So we'll keep you updated.
Questions for Ray?
Could that take longer?
Actually, we look for actually several steps, but it's still going to take some steps. Yeah, we actually, that's one of the considerations, one is simple. Then we get that person, yeah, less.
So there's nothing?
Yeah, yeah. Probably worse.
Sure. Okay. On to item C, which is the regional housing initiative. And Luke, I believe, is correct?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. I have the regional housing initiative updates for the month of August. So MCRBC facilitated the June Affordable and Supportive Housing for the ASH Committee meeting, as June. And then we also facilitated a PIA Housing Staff Committee meeting two weeks ago. Then we've also published a new white paper called Affordable Housing Needs Index. It's available on our website now. So this research identifies which census tracts within the county face the greatest need for affordable housing based on multiple demographic factors. And the findings of the research show that census tracts within the Bloomington Normal urban area, particularly a number of census tracts along the Main Street corridor in Bloomington, have the highest need for affordable housing. MCRBC also submitted the CDBG first quarter report to the town, and we will be meeting with the city regarding the CDBG program year 25 subrecipient orientation next week. For other updates, we've attended two housing coalition meetings hosted by the Center for Human Services, one in June and then one last month. We also attended the groundbreaking of the bridge last month, and we held a meeting with the Salvation Army about the ASH committee and learning more about their services. Do you have any questions on my updates?
Who is, why, Greg, I'm not sure which one to address. What more role can, or what more role can county government or city and town government have in actually on the ground helping push this affordable housing thing? I mean, we're seeing a lot of houses being built, but I wouldn't call them what you call affordable houses. So how do we, we as, you know, participants in government, local government, how do we put that on the ground? And how do we actually help do that, I guess? I know that's a big question.
Yeah, it's a big question. It's not, but that's a question that's been posed even by myself and many others. As you all know, housing is such a complicated issue. I mean, it's a community-wide, it's multi-pronged, multi-faceted from the private sector, from like developers standpoint. I mean, we have EDC, we have people in the filter, a kind of a RAM. There's so many factors affecting the housing market. Whether it's affordable, today's, something, two years ago was somewhat affordable. No longer. So it just, I don't have an easy answer, but I think we all tried this. My housing coalition in the area that's been in existence since COVID time. Recently, there has been a creation of what is called the Unhoused Task Force. You're looking at homelessness, you say another issue, aspect of the housing. We know that in terms of the private sector, on the private sector side, into suede, right, supply chain, materials, construction materials, labor supplies, all these affect, you know, the private sector. And let alone, there's so many other markets. I mean, we just, you know, we all know, when you travel, you read the news. There's so many other markets. They die for the same developers we're competing for. So why do they have to come here? So but we, I think on the positive side, we have a number of organizations. We love people, good-hearted people, to try to work together. So it's not just the governments, there are lots of nonprofits and even some people on the private sector side. So in terms of the local governments, the housing coordinator position is just one part of it. I mean, eventually we'll have what we call Implementation Committee. But it's not an easy answer, because everybody, really, like monthly meetings, I mean, let alone some other, you know, other groups. They're really trying to solve the same issue. We just hope that maybe move a little bit, because we know the city and the town, you know, they have approved many residential developments. You know, in the last year or two, many, many units. So sometimes not the approval, but it's okay. When it's approved, then the developer has to get the loans. And what's the interest rate? You know, can they build a house to the price level that's still making money for them? But they also, I think, have to be affordable to the public. So it's not easy, but I think a lot of people are trying.
It's a big, it's a big question, I understand. But what role can the comprehensive plan and the strategic land use plan have in that?
The housing, the recovery, the regional housing recovery plan that was adopted last year, that will be envisioned to be incorporated as part of the company's plan, because that 2024 plan was just a lot to look at. And there was a lot of efforts, it was a joint effort, you know, different sectors, different individuals, organizations, both the community and working with the consultants to come up with that plan that you all adopted. I think it's the immediate steps, I think, to have to implement some of the action items that definitely will be helpful, but the continuous working together with all different groups in the community. They're ongoing. I mean, we heard about the bridge project. I mean, that's. I mean, you heard about the breach project, I mean, that's not, it didn't happen overnight, uh, as you, you're, my, uh, reading the news and whatnot, it's, yeah. But, and this is a solution, but there's only so many units, I mean, uh, that, that will go into, into that project. And that's only trying to solve a, a part of the homelessness, the unhoused population, let alone the affordability type issue, let alone uh for the private sector, the employers trying to entice. And I, I, as you saying, you know, they try to entice, you know, uh, faculty members, you know, from outside of this area. They try to retain PhD students who graduate and stay, and that's another issue, let alone the students who want to leave off campus, uh, but they cannot afford the rent, the rents, yeah. So, yeah, it's complicated, but I think the good news is, I've seen, I've worked with so many people, I've read a lot of, I, you know, so, so many uh working to, uh, this, E D C, I mean, that's one of the priorities, the strategic priorities of housing uh for the strategic plan. So, yeah, so it's, it's moving. Uh, uh, this will be faster, but, but, uh, but I think a lot of people, you're, uh, you all heard the presentation a long ago uh on, on the Center for Human Services on the continuum of care. Uh, and just even that is a, a complicated, complicated operation. So, yeah, it's, I think, good, I think the positive news, uh, at least for me, the positive news is we've seen so many good people, good-hearted people in the community, really try hard, you're trying to tackle it from all different angles.
Yeah, I mean, all of the municipalities, both municipalities have approved uh housing projects, but the developers, after they get the housing projects get approved, they have to go out and get capital, they have to get investment. And that's one of the stumbling blocks uh and such, because it's still a tight money market at this point and such. So, and we're actually in a perfect storm, because a lot of communities always have issues with affordable housing. But we've got both housing, uh, affordable housing and we've got market rate rising. Um, because the average home price in McLean County right now is close to four hundred thousand. And that's just beyond what most people can afford at this part. So, um, I do know that the governor is stepping up to help try to coordinate something on a statewide level to see what kind of setups would be brought or could potentially be brought in uh to help energize this a little bit. And there have been some, not necessarily in McLean County, but in like Morton and East Peoria, some building that's been going on per se. Um, but it's, it's happening at a glacier pace. We could, we could use, uh, you know, a thousand or more units tomorrow and they probably would get filled.
Yeah, oh, okay.
You know, pretty easily, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um, Jen, the Human Services Transportation Plan?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you.
Um, as you know, we've had a lot of activity with regard to our role as the coordinating agency for Region Six, which is five counties in Central Illinois. And so this has to do with rural public transportation, but also other types of transportation availability in rural parts of our communities and across, again, this five-county area. Our last quarterly meeting, and we are now holding quarterly meetings of our regional committees, uh, was on June sixteenth. And happily, it included several county board members from several of the counties who are participating in this region. And that is a very good sign, because it's our policy committee of Region Six can operate and make decisions. And so basically, at this point, um, we have pretty much every county covered by at least one person, one county board member, in some cases, two. They still only get one vote and designate on behalf of a couple of others. So that is a much better situation than we had before coming into this year. Um, discussions at the uh June sixteenth meeting involved procedural issues, the road laws, and a few other issues that continue to be discussed. Next meeting is on September fifteenth of the Region Six Joint Policy and Technical Committees. And in anticipation of that meeting, we are trying to put together a sort of informal information exchange meeting of the members of the committees sometime this month, hopefully. And that will be for discussion of, you know, organizational issues that we may still have items for the agenda that I haven't heard about yet, but that other people may have. And we will hope to be able to do that. And of course, uh, the state is currently planning a meeting in the third week of August uh of the new service providers in the region. So we've gone from one service provider for all the counties to now our three. And of course, Connect Transit has taken over rural service in McLean County. So that's a big shift as well. Um, one of the issues for getting everything together and, and having them meet and having the organizational stuff covered in September is that we are expecting another round of the state's consolidated vehicle procurement program in which I dot essentially takes applications for and grants transit vehicles to organizations that are running rural transit. That includes the public providers, but it also includes agencies throughout the region that run transportation programs. In some time, in some cases for the general public, and others for clients of their own services and so on. So that is the big opportunity to get a vehicle without having to spend a hundred thousand dollars of, an agency's money. Uh, so we hope that we will uh be able to get some applications generated this fall. It originally planned to do this this summer, but it became impossible to do. And so we are looking forward to, we hope sometime this fall. And that really is, with one more thing, um, policy membership, policy committee membership for McLean County will be handled by David Brown of Connect Transit. Connect Transit is now the grand exipient for rural public transportation in McLean County. Used to be McLean County itself, but that's no longer the case. So it sort of makes sense for David, who is running this operation, to be the person uh representing McLean County on the behalf, the policy committee for the region. So that's round one, I have a doubleheader today.
Questions for Jennifer?
So you mentioned the change with respect to the policy. Um, do you have anything else to say about the transition to the service provider? And do you have any data on like the ridership?
It's only been a little over a month. So they, they all started July one. And Showbus continues to provide service in um Livingston, Yeracoi, of course, Kankakee counties, they have a separate agreement with Kankakee. Um, so that is an ongoing effort, you know, that has been the case for some time. So I didn't expect much of a transition there. There are other counties that Showbus also serves, so that's a separate issue. Um, as far as the new providers, I haven't met anybody yet. I'm sort of hoping to be able to go to the state meeting with them so I can get in with everyone and find out. They're both established uh providers in other counties, so they're coming into our region for the first time. Ford County is going with Chris, I believe, and um there may be a transition in Yeracoi County later this year. That's not entirely clear yet. So it is an evolving situation. We are getting positive reports from Connect Transit about their, you know, nascent experience in McLean County. Uh, it, there's a ways to go yet. There are people out there that, you know, ordinarily have been jumping onto this. And it's going to take a little time for everyone to adapt. And I imagine that's true in the counties that have, the other counties with new providers. So we'll sort that out. And I think having um a more robust policy committee for much of the last five years, in basically, it's sort of a pandemic effect. The policy committees were staffed by um designees, in, in the case of McLean County, it was Luke Hoogland from the County Highway Department. So that was not ideal, because we didn't have that direct line back to the county boards. And they were perplexed as to what was going on with this. I think that's been cleared up, a good deal. And we'll continue to do outreach to, directly to the members of that policy committee who are serving on county boards and also to the county board chairs, so that we're certain that they're getting, you know, a report, not only from their own people, but a sense of how things are going regionally and how we're working out the sort of new relationships between those providers.
So for those in the county that need those services, is the interaction like the same? Do they, they basically reach out to the same number or how, how do?
Not quite, no. Um, so Connect has set up a new service that they're calling Connect Go.
Oh, gotcha.
It has a separate phone number, it's on the website. They did do some outreach right ahead of the transition to try and contact people and actually Showbus promoted that as well. They're conforming with their previous riders that this was going on. And it's, it's a slightly different system. And so I think people are kind of adapting to that. There is a time limit ahead of which you can't preserve. It's a demand response setup, so you have to call in and essentially make your demand and have them respond. And so it's, we're looking to see how that's working. And then we'll also see if uh there are changes that, you know, the ridership and our public officials and so on want to impose and, and bring to bear. And that's just time, we kind of have to wait and see how it's, how it's emerging. Um, the, the early numbers from uh July are not overwhelming. Uh, by the end of the month, they were getting forty riders per week. Those of you who are familiar with Faith in Action and the transportation program that they run in McLean County, their usual census month-to-month is several hundred. And that's constrained by the fact that they use volunteer drivers. So how many rides they can provide and how far is dependent on the volunteers they have available. So, you know, we have a lot of resources available for people, but um I think as they come to understand Connect Transit's approach to this and are willing to sign up, then, and, you know, go with the restoration and system and so on, that they will find that uh they can get to where they need to go.
Do we know what Showbus's average monthly ridership was?
Unfortunately, we don't, because the state seven years ago said, don't break it out, just give us your numbers and the aggregate. So up until recently, Showbus had a service area of nine counties.
Yeah.
And so it was, it's, it was unfortunate that we're, we got that as a mass rather than breaking it down county by county. And of course, some people were going between counties.
Yeah.
And there was some discussion now on how to maintain that capacity. Connect is talking about that, I think some of the others are too.
Well, we certainly heard about it when the Showbus thing happened, you and I talked about this.
Yeah, right.
I've not heard much from, uh, you know, folks since this, this changeover's happened. So it's either silence, because they just don't even know what to complain about, or, or it's maybe going okay, yeah.
From what I understand, that actually the numbers has increased, you know, from uh before July one.
Right.
Uh, actually, the ridership in the, in the, in the rural area has, has increased. And then the, uh, so it's, it's like Jen was saying, it's still early, you know, in, in the change, so it's hard to say. But uh so far, I think there's some, some uh threats need to be made, you know, to system. But I think so far, pretty positive from what uh I've heard or read. And, and so it's improving in terms of the ridership from what it was before.
Good.
Thank you.
One note from the transition is that a lot of the vehicles that Showbus had, had been using over the years um and some that had been acquired relatively recently were distributed around the various counties now that, you know, the grouping is different. Not everybody wanted them, because some of them, although they were still useful for Showbus, and they were still on the road, they were like, okay, this thing is ten years old. And so with a new round of consolidated vehicle procurement process coming up, the hope was, and I think this goes for Connect Transit as well, because they're essentially using similar vehicles to what they use in a flex service. Uh, and of course, all of these must be accessible, so they have assistive devices and so on for that. I think it's just a question of waiting to see how much funding is available through the C D P. We don't know what they have lying in wait for us. So we're waiting for the announcement, keeping our fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other question for Jen? Thank you. Ray, the Go Safe McLean County Action Plan update?
Actually, I'm gonna, uh,
If you're gonna do that, sorry.
I, I did follow her last time when she wasn't.
So doubleheader for me today.
Yeah.
Um, so this is our Go Safe Plan update under the S S four A federal grant program. Um, we are doing this at lightning speed. So this, this is a very competitive project that is coming towards its final dates. Um, toward that end, towards getting as much information as possible. We are hosting two public open houses. First one is tomorrow evening at the Bloomington Public Library, I'm gonna try and figure it out. Well, you may have seen these flyers running around, there are some at the end of the table. Um, so the first one, as I said, Bloomington Public Library, tomorrow evening from five to seven. And there will be a presentation by the consultants to explain what they've been doing. Um, and then they'll have displays essentially. I've seen them, they're really dense with information, get ready to read if you do answer this, because there's a lot there. They've done an amazing amount of work, you know, since basically March. And so people will be invited after the presentation is over to go take a look at these ask questions. People from the consulting team and I and Ray will be there, I think Ray will be there, I'm not sure what your schedule is.
I'll play you.
Okay. Um, Ray has an insane schedule this week. And so we'll be there to answer questions as well about where this goes when the plan is done and submitted and, and we'll bring it back to you to, to approve it, adopt it. And then um the real work begins as we start implementation. But before we get there, um, we're gonna have, uh, the second meeting, by the way, is next Wednesday, August thirteenth. And that will be at the County Highway Department office out on Tijuana Barnes Road. We're hoping that we'll, that'd be a little easier to reach for people in rural parts of the county, at least in the eastern side of the county, um, to come and join us, because this plan applies to all of McLean County. And it, we didn't get very far with that uh the first time around back in, back in the COVID days. But we, there's a deliberate portion of the plan, it's outreach about the needs for safety improvements and rural areas and a set of, of projects to sort of start and hone our skills with. Um, while we've been, you know, going through this process, the consultants have produced a lot of information for us to work with. A management plan for the assessing the performance of the Go Safe process. A public engagement plan, which is partly for this current study and this adaption, adaptation, rather. Um, but also for an ongoing process for communicating with the public across the county about where they see issues about traffic safety. Um, project prioritization, criteria, again, there's a starting list of ten projects in the metro congestion, you know, core urban area, but also a list of ten projects in rural McLean County that seem to have priority at this point. Um, there's a policy assessment, so we're establishing policies for how this process works. And an update of an earlier assessment of underserved communities and how we can better reach out to them, um, assess their, their situation, determine what needs to have, and then find ways to get them addressed. Um, we have a draft version of the plan, as composed by our consultants, which we just got yesterday, I think. And we're hoping to release it to the Project Steering Committee, but also to the public soon, like tomorrow or Friday. And we're sort of going back and forth on that, I'm about halfway through reading it, I don't know where you are, Ray, because you're doing meetings constantly. So we will be asking the Project Steering Committee to look through it. It includes a lot of people who understand the technicalities of this plan, so we're looking forward to hearing from them as well. Um, any revisions that are made, either because of comments we make or comments coming from uh the P S E or the public, will be wrapped into the final version of the plan. And it's due to us, uh, the final, what we're calling the final draft plan. Uh, it's due to us on September tenth, so we really are closing it. The end of this process and the start of putting this plan to work. Once again, any questions?
It's a comment I read this morning about some, uh, with a similar intent, that the town and Normal is doing on the whole. And I was hoping that there would be something to teach.
And, and there will be, the town has been very much involved in this process as well. Tessa Farrar, who's on with us this afternoon, has been at our, at our meetings and communicating the town's interests. And we've had, you know, a lot of people sort of weigh in. And, you know, there are a lot of, hopefully too many hotspots, certainly in Bloomington, but also out in the county, that are just way beyond acceptable levels of crashes, non-acidents crashes, and both serious injuries and fatalities. And this plan is directed towards those two issues, serious injuries and reducing fatalities too. Do you?
Yeah. Yeah, if, if I may, just, we've been going through a question earlier. So I S U and I dot, uh, I S U and the town normal, uh, they got a grant, you know, from I dot, uh, in the United Department of Transportation. We need to address, you know, the, the safety and, uh, they, uh, call their, call on campus, uh, cause safety plan or areas right outside the campus of some of the fatalities in the last few years. Um, and as from the presentation, uh, eh, you know, that they made, you know, they're making good progress, you know, survey and whatnot. And as from the presentation, uh, you know, that they made, you know, they're making good progress, you know, survey and whatnot. The public works and engineering director, uh, from the town of Normal also serves on the Go Safe Plan, uh, Project Steering Committee, you know, our project. But yeah, so he's aware of, uh, in fact, you know, whatever he, they can apply and whatnot. And there's some, uh, interchanges, I mean, interactions with the two studies, you know, so that, you know, they do know, hey, that's going on. So yeah, that, that we do, and they know, and we know them, that they're working on that. Yeah, so definitely, I think they are trying, expect a little bit more, you know, more fun when students come back, you know, to school, uh, late, late August or something.
Next week.
Survey, yeah.
Move in next week, just so you know.
I live on Main Street, so I'll be watching for that.
We go to Walmart this weekend.
And Target too. I was dropped in Target by Jordan. You know, furniture, so I think it's time for. Okay, any other questions? If not, I will.
Just on the timing of the release of the draft plan, is there a reason it's like being released before the open houses? Is it because those two things are independent of each other or?
Actually, the opposite. We want people to have a chance to evaluate the information from the open houses. Again, tell your friends, hand out flyers, or point to our website. But also because it just gives people a better perspective for questions they can ask probably more next week. Obviously, nobody's gonna have a chance to read it by tomorrow night, but, um, but I'm gonna start to finish it by tomorrow night. But the idea is the sooner the better because we have so little time left. And we want to see it, understand it. It's, it's sort of a mix between a description of how this process works, what the intent behind this approach to transportation safety is, and how it functions from the federal government all the way down to us. But also it's, you know, as I said, there are fairly explicit recommendations about places to look at first, problems to solve first. As you know, we've talked about it. We are also currently involved in a study about its parkway, a quarter study there, which is much broader in terms of the, um, the subjects it addresses. And it's much more sort of technical in terms of dealing with the road and how it's configured. But that actually grew out of Ray's observations when he first went to Bloomington, about the number of people jaywalking across Veterans Parkway. Sometimes with groceries, sometimes with children, uh, kind of hair-raising stuff. And of course, veterans is more of the hotspots for crashes and fatalities. So those two things will come together at some point as we look at improvements for veterans and ways in which to adapt it. Part of that is to address the safety issues. So this is kind of a soup to nuts across the board effort to improve, frankly, more than reduce the incidence of traffic crashes of whatever nature. A lot of the injuries come from, you know, a car versus pedestrian or bicyclist times crashes because the, you know, sort of physical imbalance between those two sides of the equation. And so this, we don't do this randomly. And the fact that we, these two things are going to interact. And that as we take the Go Safe Plan, which we actually started, what, four years ago? We went to the county fair, we did all that stuff. And this is kind of the reboot from where to tail and a better implementation strategy than we could do in 2021. And it's countywide, so we're looking at the edges of the urban area and where the, the interfaces are there. We're looking at locations in the county that we know have safety problems. And of course, we're addressing the ISU campus with assistance from the town of Normal, so it's all part of the package.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Speaking of the Veterans Parkway Quarter Plan, Ray?
Thank you. Sad way to it. Thank you. Yeah, since the planning commission met in June, uh, there have been two meetings, uh, with the project steering committee on, on this project. And one is really the form of a workshop, uh, in June. And the consultants would be sending some concept alternatives on cross-sections and also the network improvements, try to get input, you know, from the project steering committee. And that was, uh, that happened in June. And then in July, there was, in that meeting, there was some design alternatives. You're being revealed by the, you know, presented by the consultants and also with input and feedback provided by the project steering committee. So there were some, okay, intersection, different ways to decide, there's so many different alternatives. It just get input and some preferences, you know, by the committee. So that's still ongoing. Uh, the next meeting is this coming Friday morning. So we'll, we'll keep you apprised. So it's, it's ongoing, it's still moving forward. You know, it's a lot of work, but it is still progressing very good.
Is there any type of, in that, uh, plan of just additional road development? Or different pathways to get around that would alleviate some of the pressure on the, on veterans?
At this point, I, I don't recall they talk about new roadways. I think part of this is how to, uh, like redesign the, even the existing roadway. They look at, like, I drive, you know, kind of the outer road and, and the clear water and, you know, that, that part. So, yeah, I don't think they have talked about adding new roadways. But they do, uh, look at how to make it better, you know, with the connection or, of course, it's the whole ten mile roadway. I mean, it's a lot long, uh, and, um, look at intersections, you know, that, uh, how to make the traffic flow better. But not in terms of a few roadways.
The reason why I mention that is supposedly when Evans Junior High was built, it was agreed with the, uh, got the railroad to agree to extend Hershey Road down to the stoplight at, at Evans Junior High. And somehow that didn't get documented appropriately. And now the road declines that that was an agreement that was made. But that would be one, um, one avenue to explore, to alleviate, make transportation a little bit easier and alleviate some of the pressure on that south side of the town. Just a thought.
Any other questions, Ray? Now the strategic land use plan of Ray and Anthony, and I understand you can update us a little bit?
Yeah, while, while Anthony is getting up to the podium and get, uh, to give a presentation update. As you may or may not be aware, a lot of activities happened in the last couple months since we last met as a planning commission. And you've been updated, you've got flyers from us and helping us to, to get the word out and whatnot. So Anthony has, we've been to a number of meetings in the week, more meetings to, to go, which is good. You know, just to get more public input and whatnot. And Anthony's going to give a, give a presentation what has been, uh, happening. And some of you have seen part of it, uh, so I apologize if some repeated, uh, size, but Anthony, please.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I have another presentation for you, but it should be closer to quick. So as you may know, we begin, we began our extended outreach process for the strategic land use plan. We had our first public open house meeting last night, Harton Community College. We received some good feedback from that meeting. Roughly fifteen to twenty people were there. We hope to receive similar or not more turnout at the future open house events. Just wanted to start off by going over the actual extended timelines. We have some printed copies that were distributed, I believe, before and through email. As you can see, we're currently in outreach phase one of the timeline. This first phase, phase includes five public open house meetings, as well as additional stakeholder meetings with groups, including the McLean County Farm Bureau, McLean County Mayor's Association, the NEBC Township Supervisors and Township Road Commissioners. We are also, we're also out every day of the McLean County Fair promoting the strategic land use plan as well as the SS4A project. All the comments received during this first round of outreach will be used as a guide to assist the creation of a revised draft strategic land use plan. Once the revised plan is completed, there will be a second round of public review and comment. We expect this revised draft to be ready for public review by mid-September. And the final version of the planned document can complete by the end of October. However, as you may have seen, sometimes those timelines get a little pushed back. We don't have a crystal ball. We can't always predict exactly what's gonna happen during these planning phases. So at that point, at the end of October, local governments that wish to adopt the plan will determine their own review and adoption process. McLean County Regional Land Commission does not have any zoning authority or annexation authority. Everything that is in this plan is going to be advisory for those local government entities that will actually have that power down the line. Okay. So this next slide here, we have some pictures from some of our outreach events. So this was at the McLean County Fair. We had some, um, life-saving stuff, but also all of the strategic land use plan information. And this was from Harton Community College last night, where we had our first public open house. I think it went pretty well. Okay, so now I'd like to get some back, some general background on what land use plans are and how they're used. A land use plan is a guiding vision for how a community wants to use land in the years ahead. Shows what types of activities or developments like homes, businesses, parks or schools the community hopes to see in different generalized areas in the future. Land use plans are intended to serve as a guide to assist development. Sorry, as a guide to assist planners, members of the public and elected officials in making educated decisions regarding future development. Content within the land use plan is intended to be advisory and used in conjunction with existing and future applicable plans and information available to local governments. Land use plans help guide growth to ensure communities develop in an organized and thoughtful way. Land use plans do not change or regulate zoning. The two topics are similar, however, they are very different planning tools. Zoning establishes the legal authority of the jurisdiction to regulate the types of developments or activities permitted on specific properties. In contrast, land use plans are long-term visions outlining how a community could potentially develop in the future. Just as an example of how land use plans are used, in my experience as a municipal planner for Petory County, I use their Future Land Use Map quite often as one of the many tools to help aid in writing staff reports for the zoning board of appeals. The main content of those staff reports revolved around existing conditions of the parcel and surrounding areas, as well as the compatibility of that request in that area. Additionally, future land use decisions are considered in the appropriateness of a proposed zoning change or development, but they are not the only factor that makes those decisions. Members of the ZBA in that example are provided with all of the pertinent information regarding a property, including existing conditions surrounding property use as well as future land use. Land use plans are one of those many different variables that are considered for making those decisions. All right. Now I have a general idea of the land use plan, uh, what a land use plan is and how they work. I'd like to get some context as to why this plan, uh, for McLean County was warranted. While starting the development of the larger McLean County Regional Comprehensive Plan was determined by staff from local governments that an updated land use plan was needed to address the changing landscape of the county. And in, in this regard, starting the development of the comprehensive plan means very early-stage planning, area planning, data collection. Once we get to the stage where we're ready to start involving the public, then we will reach out to the public. But at this stage, we are not there yet. Okay. Okay, so during that development process, it was determined that we needed enough to do the plan, uh, updated information. Most recent maps available for land use all predate major changes in our community, such as the growth of Rivian and Ferrero, the housing shortage and the impact of COVID-19. As you can see there, these are all the most recent comprehensive plans that are currently in effect for the municipalities. So McLean County is two thousand nine, Bloomington is fifteen, twenty fifteen, and Town of Normal is twenty seventeen. All of those plans contain land use, maps, plans, topics in those plans. As you can see, they're, they're a little bit dated. So this plan is meant to assist these plans in, in providing with those plans with updated information. Okay. Land use plans are commonly included in larger planning, larger planning efforts of comprehensive plans and includes specific goals and action items to help guide the implementation of the plan. However, as this plan's main objective is to provide updated land use information for multiple local governments that all have existing comprehensive plans, the actionable items and region-specific details from those existing plans will be used in conjunction with this one. As it stands, this plan will provide updated information while also allowing local municipalities to follow goals and objectives set in their existing plans. The strategic land use plan will be included as a planning element of the regional comprehensive plan with further refinement, public input and specific goals. In the meantime, the strategic land use plan can be used by the county in conjunction with existing plans in order to utilize updated spatial information. And at this point, I'd also like to point out that MCRPC has been the lead agency on this project. However, staff in the city of Bloomington, Town of Normal and McLean County government have been involved in every aspect of the plan from future land use decisions to the public outreach process. Okay, I'd like to move on to the development process for some of the content within the plan. In the early stages of the planning process, staff had decided to use the existing assessor land use data as the foundation for this existing land use map. There's a couple of different maps, I'm trying to keep them straight. This is for the existing land use, what's on the ground right now. We began collecting the assessor data and reviewed the existing, existing land use codes as determined by the assessor to determine how land use should be shown on the existing map. This data includes existing codes for every parcel in McLean County. Using those assessor codes, staff created land use categories as shown in the map legend here. From there, each parcel was assigned to one of the existing land use categories using the original assessor codes. After refining the data we received, we were able to create the first iteration of the existing land use map. And from there, we sent the map out to the city, town and county staff to make any necessary corrections. Excuse me, this resulted in the map you see here and the map, the map plan document. After creating the existing land use map, McLean County Regional Planning Commission sent the map to the city, town and county and asked them to provide their proposed future land use changes. So after receiving the land use changes from the city, town and county, MCRPC combined all of those, uh, space, all that spatial information into one final map. As a side note, further collaboration with rural municipalities to ensure accurate land use within and around the municipal limits will be included in the revised plan. Just this afternoon, we sent out an email to all the rural mayors after visiting the rural mayors association meeting, asking them for their, their feedback, their input, asking them to forward it to any of their municipal staff members that they believe should be involved in the plan and offer in-person virtual meetings in order to make sure that the plan is as accurate as possible. So this is the first draft of the future land use map. This map is based off of the existing land use map with the changes from the city, town and county included. All of the, uh, rural municipalities in this first draft have the same land uses from the existing to the future. So nothing changes for those municipalities in this draft. When they said in the revised draft, there could be a, a change. So I would also like to reiterate that this plan does not change zoning or interfere with the rights of property owners. It establishes a long-term vision for how that area could potentially develop in the future and will be used as supplemental information by these local governments while making decisions. Any zoning changes or special use requests will still be required to go through the correct zoning processes. This includes public hearing notice reviewed by the zoning board of appeals and final approval by elected officials. Zoning and land use are similar, however, they are not the same thing. This plan alone will not change zoning districts or improve development. Any zoning change or major development must follow the regulations established by authorities, jurisdiction. Okay, this leads me to the next steps for this plan. So our initial public comment period began June the third with the posting of the draft plan document and the online public comment form. In that time, we received a lot of public feedback regarding the plan content and process. The main comment that we heard was the desire, was the desire for additional public engagement. So from there, MCRPC staff, as well as local, uh, staff from local governments, decided to extend that initial public outreach, outreach phase and overall the entire development timeline for the plan. So with that, we'll be doing five public open house meetings, as well as a handful of stakeholder meetings to collect feedback and provide information and clarification on the plan. After this first outreach phase, we'll then be bringing the plan back in and doing a revised draft. And then there will be an additional second outreach, sorry, second public review and comment phase for roughly a month for members of the public to review the revised draft. Take all of their comments in from this first phase, revise, put it out, make sure that it meets what they, they are looking for. Okay, uh, we also have our flyers here. So this flyer on the right outlines all of our public meeting dates, times, locations in August. And then this flyer here has the QR code and some information regarding the plan. If you scan this QR code, it'll take to a website that has the plan document, interactive web map and the online public comment forum. We also have, um, all of the same information at all of the libraries in McLean County. So we drove out there last couple of weeks ago and dropped it off everywhere. So there's comment forms, handwritten comment forms with our address and email address on there. So if people wanna go to their local library, review the plan, mail in comments, they can do that as well. Other than that, uh, that is all I have. If you have any additional questions, we have. If you have any additional questions, we have to answer them. If you have any questions after this meeting, please feel free to reach out.
Questions for Anthony?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd like to talk a little bit about, oh, we can take the online first if that's easier.
No, go ahead.
Okay, I thought I heard somebody on speaker. So I think I just have some questions based on the public comments presented today and the fact that I watched the broadcast. I was not in person at the Land Use and Transportation Committee on July 8th for the county board. So I think I just want to have some understanding around like, how was it determined or what process was followed that determined that this draft was ready either for public comment or to be presented to the county board? And I don't know if that committee put it on their agenda just because it had been released to the public or if that was something we initiated to get that on the agenda.
Yeah, I think you can clear that up. So the initial public outreach phase of this plan was just that. We weren't presenting it in front of the board for approval. We weren't going to the county board of land use and transportation committee to get their vote on it. We were just doing outreach. And so we weren't necessarily sure what type of engagement we were going to receive. And so in that first few weeks of that initial outreach phase, we got a lot more comments than we were expecting, which is a good thing. And so then from there, we decided to extend that development timeline because we have now all of this interaction that I guess realistically we weren't anticipating. So at the Land Use and Transportation Committee meeting, it was solely informational. So nothing in this, the original month-long outreach process was meant to go to any official vote. At the original timeline, after that outreach process, we had a little bit of time to do revisions and take those comments and produce a second draft. And then from that point, we would send that draft off to city, town, county, and whoever else would want to adopt it. And then they determine their own adoption process for that. Is that it's your question?
I guess just from your perspective, when it was presented or released to the public, like, what stage in the, in the planning? And I'm not familiar with, you know, planning guidelines as you are. But I mean, from your perspective, how final was this? Because I do want to quote one of the county board members who said, "The presentation of the plan that was given to us was so far behind, it was confusing to people." Versus today, we heard that it might have been near final. So I'm trying to like reconcile those comments because I'm hearing different things. And so just kind of wanting to get the expertise of like, where was this? And so I'm sorry if you've already answered that.
No, that's okay. You're referencing a county board member from the Land Use and Transportation Committee?
Yes, so this was something they posted on their social media. This was not said during the hearing.
Okay, so I can give a little context to that. Are they talking about?
They were talking about the strategic.
For the very first time that we went and gave a presentation.
So they posted this like the day after that, that committee meeting?
Okay, I'm not entirely sure. I don't know, this plan that I, or this presentation that I've been giving has been pretty clear across the board. It presented similar ones to McLean County Farm Bureau. When the initial outreach went out in June of, June 23rd, 2025, we were anticipating a month of public comment to see what people thought and then taking that public comment and incorporating it back into the plan to then send it out for a final draft. So I think at the stage of public comment, we anticipated that the plan was not necessarily near completion, but good enough to show the public and get their input on to then bring back in and finalize.
Well, thank you. I think that clears it up for me. And I just want to comment, like, I thought you did a really nice job answering the questions that were presented to you. And I think it was disappointing to me that others who have had an active role, and I'm not referring to Ray, that were in the room did not speak up in terms of helping educate the others in attendance of like what the purpose of the plan is, where it was in the process. So that was disappointing to me. So again, I don't know how we can leverage our municipal partners better in the public outreach phase. And I did want to also comment, and then I'll be quiet, that I saw like the Downs Facebook page today had like posted asking for feedback. So I think that's, that is like a positive. You know, this is under some scrutiny or feeling that, but it is a positive outcome of this. It's like now there's additional eyes on this, we're getting help with some of the engagement.
Absolutely.
And so I just want to comment, I think, you know, you handled it yourself very well and, and Ray.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we, when we do a planning project, as you saw today, you know, there are tons of projects we do. We, when we do a project, we don't want to hide it and then start putting it on the shelf. We don't. I mean, I mean, we want input from, from all over. And the end of the day, when the project is done, when the report is completed, we want to see an implementation that's going to benefit the community. I mean, that's all really the motive, if anything. We, why hide it, right? I mean, we, so we don't, and like, I mean, I, Anthony did a fair job to explain. I mean, we did press release, you know, as a month, you know, of time that initially we, we put in, you know, for public comment, it's not uncommon, you know, to, or the initial phase for public comment, it's not uncommon. Actually, sometimes three weeks or whatever. So we gave four, like four weeks, and we now further extend it to September 1st. And just to, so hey, we respond to, you know, to public comments and input. Yeah, because we want 170,000 people in the whole county to know about this project. Because we don't want all the input, all the work that for you, which is a little, you know, small group of people to know. We don't, we want it out, we want people to know about it. So yeah, definitely. And yeah, we need help though, because, you know, with all the population, everything, we cannot reach out to everybody. I mean, even though we issue the press, we issue the media outlets, though we do our best, but if people don't read it, I, we cannot do more. But we rely on partners and help to get the word out. And, and I know you all got flyers from us, and you, I know you all are trying to get the word out. And we do, I mean, all different projects. I mean, today, and you have so many, it's perfect, perfect. You know, it's a perfect engagement of your work. So it's, it's been on the planning process.
All right.
I want to echo the comments made. I was at the McLean County Farm Bureau meeting that Ray and Anthony attended, and they did a very nice job of answering questions and engaging. They didn't hide from anything, they did a nice job of answering. The one question I have getting from a lot of people, and I don't know how to answer it, is how did this begin? I mean, what, I mean, was it just you guys were in a meeting and said, hey, everything we're working off of is antiquated? We need to do this? Did the county reach out to you? Did the city of Bloomington, did the town of Normal? I guess, how did this start? And I guess that's the, the one, one answer I don't, I don't have. I just don't, either I do that, I don't recall, or I don't, I never do.
I'll look for Ray on that.
That's right.
Sure, that's fine. I mean, we, we talk about the complaint process with the briefing, you know, the planning commission. So as a part of the mutual complaint update process, we'll work together with the, with the county. We want to look at the county as a system, as a whole, as a whole. And so we, you work with our partners, with the city and town, and not just on complaint, you know, on transportation projects, you know, we, we look at, you know, we don't, you know, for planners, we should not be looking like urban versus rural. We really should not. Because there's different characteristics, there's assets, you know, different, and they interact. We looking as one system. And the people who live in, in the, you know, poor and poor urban area, they could go to the rural area and vice versa. So from planning perspective, we look at it as a whole. Despite, you know, people might look at differently, but from, from the planning standpoint, we want to look at it as one whole unit. And then in terms of how you generate it, it's tough. So we were looking at the complaint process, right? As part of that, that process, more internal staff, you know, there's many projects, some on the staff level, right? And so it, and then from looking at all the last couple of years, even news, you all probably know, you all the developer proposals in the housing crisis and developers trying to build, whether it's downtown redevelopment, you know, this is across the street to new subdivisions, whether single-family homes or duplexes, not that many multifamily, but there's still some, there's some mixed-use development going through the city process, the county, maybe the zoning board process, and also the town normal process. So we recognize that, hey, the land uses, you know, while we have, as Anthony pointed out in the presentation, the 2009 plan, the 2015 plan, and 2017 comprehensive plans, it's not keeping up because, yes, right after, you know, 2008, for maybe 10 years, it's kind of quiet. I mean, somebody can attest to it because the, you know, the U.S. state market is kind of quiet. And we got even state farm, you moved some of the offices away, so there are vacancies, housing units, economic recession, not much going on, we did not have variance, you know. So it's lots, lots of developments, as you might recall. So now, in the last few years, all these major employers keep expanding, it's a good thing. But then also leads to, okay, we don't have the housing to keep up, right? We didn't anticipate all this growth. And as we talked about earlier, it, it's, there's no magic formula to all of a sudden, you know, to add those homes and whatnot. So the development pressures, the number of proposals trigger, hey, we should look at the land use element. The land use element within the comprehensive plan is just one of the planning elements. We look at housing, look at education, you know, economic development, and different, the renewable energy, infrastructure, and cohorts of things. So came to our attention that, hey, we really, because the need is, as I did point out this briefly in the presentation, kind of responds to the development pressure on these proposals, we need to have the updated, the land use elements in the comprehensive plan. And while we're working on the complaint, the more broader, it should just to see if how this more in line with what we have right now and what we do see in the immediate future. And when it's, when we talk about land use plan, it's, it's different from zoning, right? We don't have the zoning power, we all know that, right? I mean, MCRPC, we don't, we don't process developer proposals from the developers, but the city and the town, they do because they have the zoning authority, they have the zoning power, you know, given by the state agent and whatnot, and the county for the unincorporated areas. That's same, same thing. The county board has jurisdiction for the unincorporated areas. And that's why Anthony said, we're not touching, we don't want to proposing changes within those smaller villages and towns because they have their own zoning power. They, they control, they regulate through the subdivision code, the zoning code, and whatnot. So and that's, that's really the primary reason why, hey, we need, because every planning process takes time. For comprehensive plan, it's not unusual, and you can check around the whole country, lots of cities, towns. Sometimes even may not be as large area, takes 18, 20 forms, not unusual. So we, we know, hey, the, since the, the, the development pressures, applications, when, when staff, you know, from city, town, county, when they had to make reference, is in compliance with the comprehensive plans. So they want to make sure it is, but if we have a plan that's not in keeping what has happened in the last six, seven years, for example, so that's why the need to, hey, let's, you know, try to address the land use. Let's look at this land use element because it's more, more closer to home, if you will, because that affect development that's affecting maybe your neighborhood or somebody's else's neighborhood, or schools or whatever. And so, and that's a small urgency, that's why the land use plan, because it used to be called like a land use element in the comprehensive plan. But then we call it out more strategic because we're trying to tackle it from a more strategic standpoint. Is it, even though we, you see all these like drawings and colors on, on the future land use map, it doesn't mean that it's going to happen in two years, five years, 10 years. But we have to do planning, and that's why, you know, you'll be helping us in planning. And things can, your plans can be updated. See, if we did not have media, for example, when it started, you know, I don't know, six, seven years ago or something, we might not feel, hey, the pressure on housing, we, you know, maybe the growth may be more incremental. But then now, we, we know, you know, it is, you know, it's, you're employing our people, you know, not just this area, where people commuting every day to, on work here, and it's not just media too. And so, so that's really the main impetus for, for us as a group. It's not just MCRPC, but working with our partners and say, hey, we, we need to look at this so that when the zoning applications, proposal, demand proposals come through, then that's a more little bit more realistic, you know, what data to find, what considerations to be, to be taken with the, with the, with those proposals where they really, because they, they vary comprehensive plan or land use plan because they want to refer to something or just, oh, on the case, my case, my case. If that makes any sense, yeah.
I have a follow-up, okay, at least, at least.
So when you say we, you're talking about we as in city, the town, the county, kind of collectively, we're looking at this comprehensive plan and saying, part of what we need to do this comprehensive plan is to do the strategic land use plan. Okay, that, that's the part, I guess, I was struggling to come up with an answer for was, because, I mean, like the comments today, and I've heard the comments from others questioning the chairman's plan or influence, undue influence on this. I've known Mr. Chairman for as many years as I've been on this commission, and I, I don't, I don't think that's a valid concern or even.
I have no, what's that?
Right, and that's what I, that's what I wanted to, and you didn't ask me to do this, Mr. Chairman. I'm saying this on my own. I think that, that's a little unfair. None of us are getting rich doing this, we're all volunteers, we're doing the best we can. None of us are experts on this, at least I'm not, maybe, maybe some of you know more than I do. But from that standpoint, that's the answer I was looking for was, who's the we? Because there's people out in the county asserting that the city is the one that's pushing this or the town's the one that's pushing this. I don't know the background on that, but when you say we, it wasn't just Ray and Anthony sitting in the room.
Such as this.
This together.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have a question about, like, who is it, the actual author of the strategic plan? Who wrote it? And, and were they, are they regional planners or what is like? And also maybe what, what are the drivers?
So I guess to kind of piggyback off of what Ray was saying, comprehensive plans almost always had a land use section. So when we started the initial conversations of the county comprehensive plan, we're obviously going to include city, town, staff in that conversation because it's for the county as a whole. In those initial conversations, the development pressure conversation was had. And so we knew we were going to be doing the land use element anyway. The city and the town said, well, we're going to do that anyway, let's start with that. We could do that separately, and then it's part of the comprehensive plan. So that, this plan theoretically will plug in Chapter 8 of the county comprehensive plan with further updates, further outreach when we get to that point in the comprehensive planning stage. This plan is a plan that has been created by MCRPC in coordination and collaboration with the city, town, and county. So in every step of the way, we've been working with staff members from the city and the town county, specifically the zoning departments that we've been meeting with, as well as highway. But this plan has been, every local government within that, this plan has been actively working on putting this plan together. So the future land use classifications were all determined by city, town, and county staff members and their expertise. And then we as MCRPC put all of that information together. Comes out of our department, but it ultimately would be adopted by any of the local governments and whatever way that they see.
So you're hitting the data from local government, but also their directives or their drivers? This is what we want to see. And then you're amalgamating that and putting it in the strategic plan.
Yeah, we rely on our partners for, for their parts of the plan.
So like, you know, not just data, but like everything? Direction, direction, right?
Well, we, of course, it's a collaboration, collaborative effort. And then, to be honest, if some of these staff don't know kind of normal, you know, comparatively speaking, that's their own staff. And same thing for the city of Bloomington, the same thing for, say, you know, Belfour or Sable, I mean, they know the area, that's their community, they know better than us. And so in, so they deal on a day-to-day basis with maybe developers, development issues, zoning case. zoning cases, data from demographics data, to other, all sorts of data, I mean, that's their day-to-day job. And so, yes, we rely on the expertise and our knowledge, and then we'll just see how our feet in together, again, we're trying to look at it from a, like a one-unit system, system perspective.
And I have another point to add to that as well, is that this plan that we're producing, or the Regional Planning Commission, is what we do, but the city and the town can make their own land use plans whenever they want, and adopt them whenever they want. And instead of MCRPC starting the comprehensive plan development process for the county, and telling the city and town, do what we need to do, and then they adopt the land use plan, and then we look the other way, even though they've already classified and put out their plan of what they intend to do, and the areas that they have that jurisdiction, we, and we believe that it's a better process for everybody to look at everything that's on the table and say, this is what the city and the town are going to do, they have the authority to do that, it doesn't help the county at all by turning, turning the cheek and acting like it's not going to happen. So putting all of that into one document and making everybody aware of it, I think helps that overall planning process of not planning for a done at all.
Yeah, it's important for us, you have to be cohesive, right? I mean, we can print piece merely, or we can look at it a more cohesive, coordinated approach, and a collaborative approach. And so, that's what we have done, and like many other projects, it started on the staff level, so this is no different from any other projects that, that we work on, or other, other local governments work on, starts at staff level, and it would bring it, you know, to the committee level, and that's all exactly what's happening. And we apologize, you know, I know different people have different perceptions and whatnot. Again, we, we nothing to hide, we want people to take it, it's, be the champion, it's your plan, it's not, the planner's plan, you know, at the end of the day. So, yeah, so we appreciate, I mean, all the public input and whatever, I mean, there might be some misunderstanding, or understanding, you know, it, it totally understood. I mean, a lot of many people, we know, don't understand what MCRPC does, although we've been existence since 1968. So, I understand, but I think it is, if we all work together, and really for the common good, it is at the end, for the quality of life, it's really all this planning efforts, is, is the goal, is the quality of life, we're in trying to enhance, we cannot do it by ourselves, we're just a small staff. And just to look at it, we, we, this is not a major project, I don't want to even tell you the day-to-day, and the, all the different committees.
Other questions, Chairman, and then Bart?
I know we've been going an hour and a half.
No, that's, we'll take as much time as we need.
Observation, it's just elementary, but when you think about this, it reminds me of Eastside, or bypassed five years ago, and probably spent five years talking about that. But when you think about it, you've got 20 county board members, you had nine city Bloomington council members in America, but six town normal.
Seven, eight.
I can't even imagine how many rural community elected officials we have. And we all have different levels of engagement, on understanding, this is one topic of dozens that everybody has on their plate. So I looked at the words here, it said, regional comprehensive. Can you imagine putting Bloomington Normal together, and Lexington, and Hayworth, and everywhere else? And it's, it's a difficult task for everybody to understand what's going on. And I think the other thing that's missing from the good old days, the good old days, was we used to turn on the radio and read the newspaper, and communication has changed now, so we're going to websites, we're going to social media, and we've got all this conversation going on, and we just have to stay, stay together, that we're all working toward a common goal here, of trying to develop a plan that is adaptable, is flexible, and we can change depending on employment and all that. So we've got to be careful we don't beat ourselves up, we try our best to listen, whatever role we're in. But life is complicated, and you just have to go with the flow and do the best we can.
I'll be quick here, I apologize. One of the comments that I've gotten a lot was involvement of the local communities, and that came up a lot in our farm bureau. Is, is there, as we move forward in this, obviously, we can't change the rollout, the way it went, the way people perceived it, but as we move forward, does it make sense, maybe at some point in time, to just put a set time limit on every 10 years, or every five years? Because, you know, we look up there at Anthony's presentation, it says, oh, '09, 2017, you know, 2015, that really all ran, I mean, relatively random base for those of us that flow in and out of, of these type of positions. Is there a, is there like a, and maybe that hampers us too much, but I'm just, I'm looking forward as we go to the next time we do this, is there some kind of set interval we could do that, to kind of, people would expect it coming?
Yeah, well, but it's, and you hit on a good point. I mean, when you think about the fact, the last regional plan that we did, or the part of the county did, comprehensive plan was '09. Very few people, none of the county board members are part of county board now, and such, and a lot of people weren't part of that process per se. In essence, Ray and regional planning were following kind of the process that was used in '09, which started off with a land use plan and such. So there's really not that, it's really not that difficult. What's changed is a lot of the people around, in the community, haven't been part of it per se, and such, and so, you know, and we're in a rather testy time in our country, in terms of testing and trusting government and such, so we got a little bit of that. And we certainly, I think in many ways, didn't quite estimate and take that into account like we should, per se. But you're right, I think the county is, is going to have to, I think, think about doing things on a little more of a regular basis, per se, and I think also too, we have to do a slightly better job, since we're the lead agency on this, to kind of communicate to everybody broadly, what we're doing, and where this is coming from, per se, because this is all part of the normal planning process, there's nothing unusual about it, it's going to happen, it's under discussion, there have been no final decisions, nor will there be. The plan will be tweaked, will be changed, as other people weigh in on it, and ultimately, it's going to go to the county board for final approval for the county, but also land use is, that is going to be confirmed by the town and the county, and each municipality within McLean County, is going to have to, as Anthony mentioned, develop its own process on how we approve these things. So there's nothing that people are being told they've got to do at this point in time. So there's plenty of time to change whatever is in that, whatever is being presented and such, Anthony?
To that point, the standard updating process for a comprehensive plan is typically five to 10 years, there's not a stricted deadline, it brings back to the point that city, town, county, COFACS, they can all do their planning process whenever they want, can't necessarily put a strict regulation on there, we can have our process, and whatever we determine that to be. But things change, priorities change, development pressures change, and so it's difficult to put an exact time limit on, on when you're going to do this plan, you know. But, and also to the point of adoption, it's up to those municipal governments to determine if they even want to adopt this plan. So, you know, we hope that this plan is good enough for the rural municipalities to use in the future, to help them plan for what could potentially come. But it's not a requirement by, it's for any of these, these local governments to adopt this plan.
Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, so you kind of, what I'm hearing is that there's nothing nefarious going on here, right? And, you know, I think we've learned, and that can tell you stories from the unit five perspective of, you know, how people are like, we didn't know there was a deficit, we didn't know these things, when we talk about them multiple times a year, right? But people don't pay attention to it until it becomes important to them, or it's in their backyard. So I think, you know, while, yes, we can beat ourselves up about maybe we should have done this differently in terms of the publication, you know, that hindsight is 2020, you have a plan moving forward, you've got extensive speaking engagements, open to feedback, and so I think we look at this as an opportunity, that this engagement, look, as is an opportunity to collect additional feedback, and that's good, right? We want people to be engaged and aware, and if they got aware because they thought something bad was happening, I don't care, I'd like your feedback, so thank you very much. So, so let's look at that as a, as a positive, and, and just move on. But the question that I had about the actual plan development has to do with how do you balance in a plan like this, or is it a separate plan that evaluates the usage of existing space? And when existing land perhaps is not leveraged to its full capacity, like the Coachman Hotel site, or, you know, Eastland Mall, for short example, you know, we have lots of space that we haven't fully maximized, so does, does this evaluate that? Is that a separate plan and a separate process? So instead of expanding our footprint, protecting that rich agricultural land that we have, that, you know, once you, once you turn it over, you can't turn it back to, to rich agricultural land. So once it's gone, it's gone, and we have to protect that as a natural resource as well.
Yeah, I think this, this plan is meant to be general. And so it doesn't necessarily exclude anything of that kind, any infill development, it's, it's not that this plan is meant to kind of not highlight that, but it's also, it is meant to work in conjunction with existing plans that already do highlight those topics. So the city and the town have extensive infill development topics in their existing comprehensive plans, and this map, essentially, this new updated strategic land use plan, will allow them to have a new map to look at, and still apply those existing comprehensive plan goals and objectives. And then for the county, in this situation, they have that same opportunity to use the existing plan with new updated spatial information, as well as this being the kicking-off point of updating a plan, and being able to use this plan to go a little bit more in-depth on some of the new topics that we're talking about, the new development pressures, and how you shortages, and so. This plan isn't meant to address every single detail of comprehensive plan, it's mostly meant to just give a updated informational packet, essentially, that can be used in conjunction with existing information.
So what I'm hearing is it's a separate, separate but related project, but that through this, this process, we can certainly express those concerns as a community, and put, the map thereby puts pressure on municipalities to demolish or take down a building that is, needs to be put down, and somebody can figure it out.
Absolutely, this process has been a great learning experience to understand what the outreach for the comprehensive plan is going to look like, what topics people are bringing up now that we can consider for that planning process. We didn't know it was going to turn out this way, and it did, I think we're going to get a outreach, it's a good learning, to a point, and I think it was beneficial.
If I may, just think of a couple examples that have come up in the last few years. We adjusted our plans when Rivian came to town and said, Rivian wants to do this, town normal, the other party said, yes, let's change our plan, let's do this. Brandt Agricultural Manufacturing, the distributor up in Lexington, that wanted to locate on a corner intersection with the interstate. So these things come up, those municipalities change their plans, so it's a general guideline. Anthony, you've done a great job. Thank you very much. But I think we look at this as something that's etched in stone, and this is a planning document that changes and evolves, and wherever those elected officials are at that time, can change it. Think about all the change in elected officials over the last, since '09, mayors, managers, race positions turned over twice since the last 10 or 15 years, so a lot of change, we just need to go with it.
Yeah, and keep in mind, we're not the ones that are going to make the final call, that's not us. That's the municipalities, they have the final say, we're advisory, but that's it. Any other comments?
We shortly, my dear.
Oh, please.
The, the land use plan, look at it as a guide. It's not a law, it's not, you know, regulation, look at it as a guide, a high-level guide, guiding principles, guiding, you know, the, whether downtown preservation, fountain preservation, compact development, redevelopment versus suburban growth, or expansion, or employment centers, and whatnot. And think about, and that's us, think about the zoning cases, zoning applications, it's city and town, and they deal, have to deal on a parcel-by-parcel basis, okay, this land, this five acres, this hundred acres, this, you know, whatever property, whatever shape of property, whatever, there's a quake going through, and there's topography issues, roadway accessibility issue, landscaping, and fencing, and compatibility, all those, that's on that zoning case level, that would be considered by those local authorities, I mean, the municipal governments. So when they look at a case, kind of zoning case, they, that's what they do, all those more detailed analysis, and then when they look at, okay, what's the guide says, you know, a guidebook, kind of blueprinting guidebook, and say, okay, it says low, medium, residential, for example, oh, that's a piece of picture, but there's some changes, oh, maybe, oh, easy land, you know, coming to here, and wow, you know, jack booth, and, and so that has to be updated, the plan has to be updated, and, and, yeah, we, we, we don't have, we don't have magic, oh, we wish we did, what's going to happen in five, 10 years? But I think we try to keep up today, and one of the reasons, you know, that like, although it's been a while since 2009, when the plan was up there, as I said, and you all know, it's been pretty quiet, global recession, no developers doing anything in our area. But then when living came with sustainability, like possibly a really important issue, you know, you know, the whole country, this 2020 census information became available, there's more data available for us to make more informed recommendations, that's what we're doing. So, yeah, there's no, it'd be nice to know, okay, set an expectation, okay, so after we do a plan, some cities and counties, they don't do it as frequent, some maybe 30 years, whatever, there's no change. But then if there's changes, they do it more often, four, five, you know, years, three, or whatever updates, yeah. So, so that's kind of the context, if you will, and I appreciate all the comments and suggestions, and I think, yeah, we do our best, and, and, but we, yeah, we welcome your comments, you know, like I said, it's, we need champions, it doesn't have to be us, you know, we do our part, it's what we went to school for, and got paid, and do it every day, you know, devote many, many, many hours and whatever, but at the end of the day, it's for the communities.
Any other comments, questions, before we move on? Is there anything else that needs to come before the commission, before we go into executive session? Hearing done, I'd like to declare that we're going to move into executive session, I'd like to ask anyone who is not a commissioner to leave the room. Thank you all, staff.
Do you have to state the reason we're going under 2C1?
Oh, well, we haven't been, but we're going in to talk about personnel, personnel matter. So everyone else.
And there, will there be any action coming out?
No, no action, informational.
Thanks, John.